No, no. Want to make sure?
What's the meeting to order and we'll stand for pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Excuse me, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman McDay.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruehmann.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Just so that we can make it clear, I'm operating this, I'm not operating the system actually. So it's a little different than Mayor Stockton. You basically have laissez-faire access to this. The problem is at four people, then the fifth person can't comment. So I would ask you to, when you're done, turn yourself off. It took us a while in the county board to actually come to that realization, I can tell you that. So, but anyway, thank you all very much. We're gonna start with the public comments section, and we have three people who've asked, and I'll start out with Alton Franklin, who I see in the back. Come on up, Alton. If you'll just state for the record your address, and we will give you three minutes. We have Scott, the timer, for three minutes.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive, here in Bloomington, Illinois. Not a whole lot to say this evening. I'm pretty much adopting a wait-and-see approach. I will say that, to this point, after attending the organizational meeting and speaking with Mayor Renner, as well as a number of the other folks on the council, I am somewhat guardedly optimistic. It looks like we are actually coming to a point of doing things instead of talking about talking, or planning the planning. And some of the things I hear, I'm, that's what I'm optimistic about, but there are other things where I do have a certain reserved approach, which I'm not going to go into at this point. It does appear that we've been somewhat energized, and I'm exceedingly grateful for that because, for all too long, it's been a very lethargic, talk-intensive process that I've witnessed over the past few years that I've been coming here. I am mission results-oriented, and that's what I like to see, and that's what I'm hearing. The one thing that I do abide by is, as my dearly departed grandfather said, "I don't just listen to what a man says, I watch what a man does." When a man's actions don't match his words, I put my hand over my left rear pocket and I back away slowly. I don't particularly enjoy that, and I am not known for keeping quiet about what I have issues with. And I think most everybody here is aware of that, and I am pleased that we can have adult conversations, that we can move on in a positive way, and that's what I'm looking for, too, is the moving on. Congratulations, sir, and let's get going. Thank you.
Thank you all. And we have Linda, I should've had my glasses, Kruger, is that correct?
Yes.
I didn't butcher your name. Hi, Linda. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Kruger. I live in Ironwood, 1108 Asbury Farms in Normal, Illinois, but the business I represent is at 1303 Morrissey in Bloomington, and that's Wishbone K-9 Rescue. And we have a dog ordinance modification or revisions on the agenda to discuss, and we just learned of this this morning in the Panograph article. I don't know if that was through negligence on our part, or if it just wasn't well-publicized, but we would ask for a continuance on that, as this ordinance would impact us and our business, and we're wondering if it's possible to table that for a couple of weeks to give us and other animal welfare groups in the community a chance to look at that and raise questions, make comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff Sadoff? Familiar face, haven't seen you in a while. Come on up.
Thank you, Jeff Sadoff. Actually, I live at 701 Wheeler out in Hudson, so appreciate the time talking. I'm a volunteer for Wishbone K-9 Rescue, and like Linda, I saw the article in the paper today, and I guess I would echo her thoughts, that you're dealing with an emotional issue, want of public safety, trying to make the city safer. I would say that if, I would ask that the council, you know, take your time, look at this issue from all angles, because look at cities that have enforced stronger dog laws and dog protection laws, and see how effective they've been, or not been, in this case. One thing I'd also ask you to consider is that the impact and the image to the city. Denver, Cincinnati have enforced very strict dog laws. The question is then, how does that impact growth, as people look to move to different cities and whatnot, and what the impact might be there? Having been a volunteer for Wishbone, you know, this has, it's been interesting the last year and a half to see how positive Bloomington Normal's looked at in terms of being a very dog-friendly place. Lots of dog parks, there's a ton of adoptions that happen here, a ton of them. I was recently with the president of stray dog rescue down in St. Louis, nationally-known, I mean, a huge multimillion-dollar rescue, and they were stunned to find out that there were, you know, almost a thousand dog adoptions here in Bloomington Normal. He's actually asked how we do it, and if he could come up here and speak. But again, it's a very emotional issue, I just ask you, take your time, do your research, you'll find out lots of interesting things. Can't believe everything you read on the internet, either way, but hope you take your time and look at it carefully. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And just so that everyone understands, it's not the practice of the council or the mayor to react to any of the public comments as they're occurring. Next, I have the distinct honor of recognizing our distinct fire chief, Chief Kimmerling. Would you come forward? And if I could have everybody just kind of turn around, doesn't that make you look safe? Look at those guys in the back. We have outstanding firefighters and outstanding police officers in our community. Thank you, and thank you for all you do. Chief Kimmerling.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure that we have the most important people come up tonight, and that would be our four new firefighters who have completed their one-year probationary period, and are here to be sworn in in front of the council and a lot of their peers. I'll read a brief bio on each one of them, and then we'll have the city clerk swear them in. And again, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask the family members who want to have cameras.
Absolutely. Please have the family members come on over here. Actually, what you, I think we could come inside the diad here, is that right, for pictures?
The city clerk's gonna stand here to swear them in in front of the city manager, so if they could come up behind the city manager, that would be wonderful.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Give them all some time. Fortunately, when you get to my age, you have to wear these and read things, so. First, I have Kyle Kleinfelter, 26-years-old, originally from LaSalle, Illinois. His parents are Mark and Mary Kleinfelter of LaSalle. His siblings are Matt, Cody, and Megan. Kyle began as a volunteer with the LaSalle Fire Department in 2002, and attended Illinois State University and received a bachelor's degree in business management in 2009. He received his paramedic training at Kewauchee Community College in Malta, Illinois, and a little-known fact about Kyle is he's a fourth-generation participant in the sport of curling. His father has been state champion, and Kyle currently competes in league play today, and he has his parents and his brother here tonight with him. Next is Paul Sullivan. Paul was born in Chicago but grew up in Elmhurst, Illinois. He attended York High School and received his associate's in fire science from the College of DuPage, and his paramedic license from Central DuPage Hospital. Paul spent paramedic for about three and a half years, and has a paramedic at Superior Ambulance in Elmhurst. His hobbies include camping and other outdoor activities, and volunteering with the Boy Scouts. Paul is also an Eagle Scout. Paul's parents, Dennis and Loretta Sullivan, are here tonight with him. Tony Salvatore is the next. He was born and raised in Bloomington area, began volunteering for the Karlock Fire Department about four years ago. After getting a small look at what the job was about from his volunteer experience, he decided to pursue a career of his full-time firefighter/paramedic. He attended Harlan Community College, and after graduating from Normal West High School and obtained his EMT Basic License, after completing EMT school, he was hired at a full-time job as an EMT in Peoria. While working in Peoria, he completed his paramedic program through AMT. The Bloomington Fire Department exam in 2011 was the first one he had ever taken, and he was successful in getting hired off his first list. He is here tonight with his mother, Karen. Last, we have Stuart Blade. Stuart grew up in Rochester, Illinois. After graduating from high school, moved to Orlando, Florida, and was hired at Walt Disney World. While working as a lifeguard, he attended the Central Florida Fire Academy and night-school EMT class. He was hired by the Satellite Beach Fire Department in November of 2004. During that time, he received training in confined space, trench, wildland, and ocean rescue. He became a paramedic in December of 2009. In July, he will be married five years to Jackie, and they have two children, Brody and Olivia, and are expecting their third. They have recently purchased a home in Bloomington and are moving in the beginning of June. Along with his wife and children, he is joined by his parents, Clark and Luanne Blade, this evening. I'd also like to point out that, and it's become a habit, but every time I come up here and I introduce our new firefighters, all I can tell you that the accolades they receive from their peers and their supervisors are unbelievable. We are getting high-quality employees, we're getting personnel that do a fabulous job every day, and I'll tell you, my hat's off to the work that they do every day for the citizens of this community.
That, gentlemen, stand up here.
Okay, I think people want pictures, or you guys, probably you're all behind me. You can do that.
We'll switch. We'll take our time.
I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me, and I guess I'll talk to you guys, watch for your hands, I hope they're not trying to fake you. I will say, ask you to state your name, and when I say state your name, state your actual name. I state your name.
I, Alderman.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
To the position of firefighter
To the position of firefighter.
In the city of Bloomington
In the city of Bloomington.
And the county of McLean
The county of McLean.
Will solemnly swear
Will solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois
And I will faithfully discharge the duty
And I will faithfully discharge the duty
Of the position of firefighter
Of the position of firefighter
According to the best in my ability
According to the best in my ability.
Again, thank you all very much, and thank you to all of our firefighters and first responders. We really appreciate all you do for us, our community. Thank you. We move right along, from there to the appointments and recognition. We have an introduction of appointments and reappointments. We have invited everyone who was either appointed or reappointed to attend this evening. I know that some of them are in the audience, I'm actually, I see a few of them. And if there were anyone, are there any people that many members of the council would like to have come up and ask questions? Should be the opportunity? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right along to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, of course, typically has items that are generally considered to be non-controversial, or systems maintenance. So any member of the council can remove an item from the consent agenda to question it, or perhaps if they're in disagreement. So are there any items that we would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Alderman Sterns.
7F, I believe. I understand, is there to be a presentation? I had a question about 7F, and I see in my questions that there's going to be, the Director of Animal Control will be present to address, so I'm waiting for the answer. I didn't know if I needed to pull it to get that, or...
Do we, so you just have questions?
Well, right. I have the same question I had before, about the criteria for euthanasia at the shelter and so on.
Do we want to go ahead, David, do you think we should go ahead and pull that, then? Or answer the question?
We could. We do have the answer on the responses to council questions. So, if you, but again, I believe, Marshall, she's here if you want to pull it and ask a question later.
What do we go ahead and pull that?
She's also, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's also here for regular agenda, item A-B.
Regular agenda, okay. So we're gonna go ahead and pull item 7F at the request of Alderman Sterns, okay? Any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would like to request the 7C be moved to the regular agenda.
7C, okay. So then we would consider them in the order of 7C and then 7F under the regular agenda, so we're pulling those from the consent agenda. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Black. I was gonna call you Scott, sorry. Alderman Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini, okay. Will the clerk call the roll? Apparently, legally, we don't have to call the roll, but our ordinance says we have to call the roll for a consent agenda, and we may be in the process of considering changing that in the future. So, Madam Clerk.
Alderman McDay.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruehmann.
For both the consent and regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items, and I vote yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Okay, then we'll continue then with item 7C, and we turn it over to Alderman Fruehmann, who had pulled this.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you want me to re-ask some of my comments, questions, or whether they're already documented, and whether you want to address them, or how you want to handle that.
Sure. Well, we can do it however you, it's your pleasure. I was gonna address this under the mayor's comments time, but I'm happy to do it at this point, if you'd like.
Sure. I think that'd be important prior to our vote. I mean, I don't have any opposition to any single person. I think, for my benefit, it'd be nice to have a little further discussion of what your intentions are as far as filling the seats and so forth and so on.
Absolutely, and we actually talked about this at our council retreat, and had some good ideas, actually Alderwoman McDay, excuse me, had some good ideas at that retreat, and even some in emails since. So essentially, the, our current process for appointing people to boards and commissions is broken, and it's one that frankly is unacceptable in terms of how it operates, pure and simple. What do I mean by that? Well, as of the day that I was elected, and now I think the number has increased, there are, there were 43 people who had been, had allowed their terms to expire. It was a total of 55 appointments, 12 vacancies, and 43 people whose terms had expired, and some of them many, many, many years ago. Now, there have been some that have expired since. Now, why does that matter a whole lot? Well, in pure and simple, it means that there are about four dozen people serving on boards and commissions that do not have the consent of their elected officials to hold the jobs that they're in right now. They've not been appointed by the mayor, and they haven't had the council's approval. That's not acceptable. It's also not acceptable from their perspective, because the people who give up their time to serve on boards and commissions, who could be spending time with their families, who could be doing other things, choose to serve the city, and they don't know that they might not be removed at any point, because they're kind of on thin ice. They deserve to have a term, whether it's three years or four years, this is the period of time that we're going to appoint you, and they serve for that period. Now, in addition to that, of course, there's also a process of, in a sense of democratic accountability. Our citizens expect us as elected officials to appoint and approve people to serve, and make decisions that are important, policymaking decisions in many situations, and they expect us to hold them accountable. It is not the case that people should continue to just serve, and serve, and serve. We respect what they've done, they do great things for us, but we have to balance the need for institutional history with having new blood injected into the process. It certainly shouldn't have been a secret to anyone who had followed the last mayoral election that I had concerns about our current boards and commissions. I talked about it the day I announced, all the way through election night. So there are other kinds of issues. The representation of our boards and commissions. I had said many times that I'd like us to have more young people, and people from throughout the city involved in boards and commissions, involved in our political process. I think we, as a change and dynamic community, will make better decisions if we have more diverse perspectives. So for all those reasons, I think we need to change the process. Specifically, what do we need to change? I think, as I've mentioned in our retreat, and there was a little bit of coverage in the Panograph on this, we're going to be phasing in a process where everyone will be asked to reapply for their position 90 days before their term expires. Now, for a lot of reasons, since some of the positions have expired as much as five to seven years ago, three years ago, two years ago, a year ago, it's gonna take a little while to rotate those through. By a little while, I'm assuming 60 days. And right now, we've got 15 appointments today, we've got another wave of appointments at the next meeting, we're gonna try to consolidate some boards and commissions in the building area. And so as of maybe a few weeks from now, we'll have a clearer idea of who's left, and in terms of the positions. And at that point, we will ask people to reapply for their positions, and, you know, give them 90 days, and then consider other applicants in light of that. And certainly, given the publicity behind this, and that I talked about it during the campaign, we've gotten lots of people who have stepped up the plate and said that they're interested. Now, that's another issue that I want to return in a minute to, some of the things that Alderman Woman McDay has suggested. So the, we're not asking people who are currently, everybody who's serving in a board and commission, to fill out an application, only the people when their terms come, or, you know, expire. At this point, most of the people serving on boards and commissions, from what I understand, we don't even have applications or really much information about them on file. So we'll remedy that over the next year or two years, as people come up for reappointment. We'll get some information on them, this would be public, it certainly would be accessible to the aldermen and then women, if they're interested in that. Now, what are the things that we do to try to help increase the pool? Well, every time I've had a media interview, I've tried to help stress that, or almost every time. We talked about it at our mayoral open house last Friday, and that was an important subject that people were interested in. When we have neighborhood town meetings, I'll mention it again, but that still isn't systematic. Alderman McDay has suggested several things that I think are really good ideas. One, posting them online, so people can make applications online, they can see what's available. Today, you can sort of see what's available, but you can't really apply online. I think it's a great idea. The other thing that Alderman McDay, again, I wish these were my ideas, they're really good, is that we ought to have an annual, perhaps all-about-bloomington-type-of-event, where we invite people to come over, and maybe it's at the BCPA, and say, hey, these are the boards and commissions that we have, these are the things that they do, these are the exciting ways that you can get involved, and these are the upcoming vacancies or expirations, and just let people know what's going on. So certainly as much as possible to increase the openness and accessibility and transparency of the process. And I don't know if that hit everything that you had asked, Jim. Are there some other questions?
I think that's very helpful, and again, I want to emphasize, I'm very supportive in, of the, all the nominations, reappointments. I did make in my comments that, in my opinion, I think it's very important that we keep our rosters updated, accurate, and one of the things that's on the rosters, that we've talked about as a group before, is the importance of attendance. So I don't know that I have to have the answer tonight, but hopefully all these reappointments were satisfied with their attendance and participation in the past. I don't know that we have that answer described.
I can honestly tell you, I did inquire, I don't know that I, of all of the eight or nine reappointments, if I had that information, honestly, when I made the determination to recommend to the council that they be reappointed. But I think that that's probably a good piece of empirical information. If people are not attending regularly, if they're causing problems in effect for us having legal quorums, then they shouldn't be reappointed.
So I don't, thank you, I don't need to repeat any of the comments that I've made. We all understand those up here, and...
If you'd like, it's your discretion to hold them.
No, I think it's, you've outlined it very well, and I just hope that we can keep a good record of our members, and our attendance, and participation, and I'm encouraged by the, by the organization that you plan to put into it that might not be there today. So that takes care of my questions.
And thank Alderman McDay. Any other questions?
I do have one question.
Yes, Alderman Millamway.
So how many times can somebody be reappointed, or is it limited to?
Unless the council suggests otherwise, I haven't suggested term limits. But just that, we should make it clear that people are serving, and just like Alderman and the mayor, you have a finite term, and you have to be held accountable. We have to be held accountable to the voters. And so the process of, depending on the board or commission, but some of them do, serve at the pleasure of the mayor without consent of the council. But it's primarily through the mayoral appointment and council consent process that we hold boards and commission members accountable.
Mayor, I'd be prepared to make a motion if there's not any further discussion.
Just wanted to make a comment, if I may.
Oh, please.
Thank you, Mayor Renner. One thing I wanted to kind of put a timeframe on this idea of having online applications. Do we think we can get that done by the end of summer? Is this, what's the timeframe?
Well, first, the form is out there online. They can go out and, I, as I can recall, I think you can even put your information on there, but then you'd need to print out the form and sign it, kind of certify, you know, to the truthfulness of the information, and then submit that. It would take some time to allow for, you know, the electronic copy to be sent in. It does, we don't have that many going on there, but again, it's just a matter of priorities with all the other IT projects we have going. I don't have an estimate from IT how long that would take, though. Have to get back to young.
Is it possible you'd have a, well, I don't know, that would be redundant, I was just thinking, send in a signature separate from the form, but then we're still making them send in the form, right? Right.
Well, one of the themes that recurred during our discussion at the retreat was that we wanted to get more people involved, and how that we were disappointed at the turnout from the last election on a local level, and one way that we can engage with people is to encourage them to apply for these boards, and the easier we can make that, the sooner we can do that, and we can promote that, we can hopefully get more citizen participation, which I think is a goal that we can all get behind.
Other comments, or then, oh, I'm sorry, David.
Mayor, I'll just add on to something that David just said. Beyond the application process, out on our website, we have all of our boards and commissions listed. It's available online to be reviewed for each committee, or commission, or board. We have the meeting times and details, length of terms that folks are selected to serve, a description of what they do, the current members, their positions, their phone numbers, and when their terms expire. So most of that information's online, and been available online for a while. So in terms of trying to move it forward, we may not have as much to move forward as at first blush we might think.
Thank you, thank you. Alderman Fazini?
We can avoid the, having the IT area work on this. If we adopt what the Panograph does, when you submit a letter to the editor, you don't actually have your physical signature on it, because you can do it online, but they call you to confirm that you are the one who sent it, and we can make that phone call if...
Actually, you can, I'll put that burden on the mayor, I'll call him. So we don't worry about IT, okay?
Yeah, so it'd make it a lot simpler.
Sure.
I yield to the alderman from my right to make the motion here.
Okay.
I would make the motion that item 7C, or we changed that?
It's 7C, yeah.
7C be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fazini, Alderman Fazini. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Aye means you're in favor of the appointment as presented.
Alderman McDay.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruehmann.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll move right along to item 7F. Thank you very much, we'll move right along to item seven F, and Alderman Stern's had some questions, and we have someone here, come on up.
Thank you. Apparently, the animal control warden is going to address the question about euthanasia, apparently, in the, on vicious dogs. But I'm very interested in the fact that obviously, the city is one of the funding groups for the McLean County Animal Control Services, and both the Warden Services and the Shelter Service, and maybe this is even more about the shelter. But, you know, my concern about this, I think this is, hopefully is a good time to ask, is about the humane treatment, obviously, you know, of the animals, both how we euthanize, what our criteria are, and also, what our efforts are to really promote adoption, if we possibly can. One of the, my conversations today with Wishbone Rescue kind of helped me rethink and focus, I talked with several of them, about the issues that I think our citizens are really concerned about, I think. You know, the humane treatment, and just making sure that we're, you know, we're all very much aware of what's happening to these, in my book, poor unfortunate animals that sadly fall into the county's hands. So, with that, that explains my question, and I appreciate.
It's very complex at many levels, and I'll try to address them best that I can. Oh, sorry, my name is Marshall Thompson, I'm the Director of the McLean County Animal Control, and I've been serving the animal control for about fifteen years, and I've devoted my life to making sure that every animal that comes into our doors has the opportunity of being rehomed and being well taken care of, and it's very, very important to me that they receive humane treatment on all aspects of everything that we do. And so, you do raise good questions, and I want the community to ask these questions, because we need support. Without community support, an animal control can't be successful. So, there are many aspects of what we do, from rabies prevention, aggressive dog control, we do a lot of wildlife, community education, we remove dead animals, so there's many layers of all the services that the animal control provides. I believe it was in August or October, there was a serious dog mauling that brought to the attention that there were some needs and deficiencies in the current Bloomington ordinance, so that we could find more reasons to target the animals that are being aggressive to the community, and threatening, and trying to harm people, instead of doing breed-specific legislation. And I support that, every animal should be given the effort to have an opportunity based on their behavior. So, does that answer the part on the evaluation for you?
Thank you, and I'm not asking so much about evaluations, but I do appreciate what you're saying, I really do. But about, in terms of the efforts for adoption, you've started into that, I was a little bit concerned to learn that...
Many, many different groups, we do work with Wishbone, we work with the Humane Society out on K's, we work with Caesar, we work with Breed-Specific Rescues, we also have our own adoption program. We just recently purchased new software, so that in the end of the summer, we should have our pictures up on the website, so that we can start promoting our adoption program. And we also have gotten clearance to go to several off-site locations, and start talking to the community about the importance of spay and neutering. We also have the McLean County Population Control Fund, and we, people who qualify for SNAP, if they're income eligible, they can come out and fill out an application, and we will pay for the entire cost of the spay and neuter with their veterinarian, again, supporting the veterinarian community, the relationship between the veterinarian and the client, the, you know, a long-term housing of the animals. So, we try really hard to look at all avenues of spay-neuter behavior, we also encourage training, so if someone's having a problem with the dog, we try to get them to, you know, trainers, so that they can work with keeping the dog long-term. And we really care about all the things that come with the animal ownership, from being responsible, to being good, to being kind, you know, to providing them with all the things that they need.
Okay. And the other thing was the, and this goes for both, I guess we might as well get the information now, and then we'll also have it for the vicious dog. You know, in the vicious dog ordinance is, are some language about, quote-unquote, eligible for euthanasia and so on, when, and what I'm asking now, though, specifically, is what are the criteria when a dog in the shelter is just, you know, unfortunate, I mean, you just get to the point where...
Talking about your legal language for subject to euthanasia, is that what you're getting at? That would be the legal component.
If I might just say, at this point, Alderman Sterns, it may very well be that this is postponed till for two weeks.
Okay, well, that would be fine.
If we can just focus on this particular item, and then let's handle this, and then we'll ask those questions separately, if we get to that.
That would be fine.
I would really like to...
Because then maybe we have another two weeks.
Can I just, one more thing?
Oh, sure, sure.
Well, real quick, I want, if you could, maybe you and I could communicate about what you're, you know, looking for, you want to come out for a tour, if people want to come out and see and talk and stuff, I'd be happy to try to...
Well, Marshall, that's great, and yes, I do, very much, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, please do come.
But, you know, I wanted to get some things out publicly, because after all, we are funding you, and we, you know, we appreciate very much what you're doing, and you're performing an extremely necessary, important service. In terms of the euthanasia, though, and I hate to ask this, but I asked it on email today, and I'm waiting for the response, you know, what is the method of euthanasia? Are any animals, I'm really hoping, and I don't know, that gas is not used in our animal shelter, and you can tell me.
Sodium pentabarmetal and euthanasia by injection is what we use for ninety-five percent of our animals, and we do have an approved carbon monoxide chamber that we use for like skunks and wildlife and things like that, it's something that's been with the facility for a long time, but we've moved into our contract veterinarian doing the majority of all the services.
So, it's not used for domesticated dogs or cats, or...
There may be, if veterinarian approval, if Dr. Pearl wants to do something, then he would have that discretionary, but we don't have any control over that, it has to be the veterinarian that does that process. And there's more information available on that, and it's accepted through the HSUS as a method of euthanasia, and you have to look at what the animals' needs are. If the animal doesn't want to be held and restrained and contained to go through that process, then it's nicer for them to be in that kind of environment. So, we look at the animals' needs as well.
Okay, well, I appreciate your offer of a tour, and I will certainly take you up on that.
I really wish you would, because I think that will take a lot of the stigmatism out of it, and a lot of the misinformation and things like that, that have been put out there to make us...
Well, no, we don't want misinformation under any circumstances, and I do appreciate what you're telling us, and I will be very happy to come out and take the tour. And I hope, maybe, you know, we can all talk about other, you know, pictures on the web, that's great to hear, because I know there haven't been, maybe a little change in the hours, so more people can come in.
We did change our hours, so we were open through the lunch hour, so that people could come out for the lunch hour, and we are still Monday through Friday, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thanks. So, now we're back to item seven F, that's the intergovernmental agreement, it's not the ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve?
To make a motion to approve seven F as presented.
Move by Alderman Schmidt, is there a, Alderman Schmidt, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Move by Alderman McDade, any further discussion? Seeing on all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Now, if we move to our regular agenda, item eight A, an ordinance authorizing aggregation of electric, electrical load and approving, I should have brought my glasses, load and approving a plan of operation and governance for municipal opt-out electricity aggregation, and designating the mayor and deputy city manager to have the authority to approve electrical supplier on May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. And our recommended time on this is about twenty minutes, but do I have a motion to approve, so that we can begin discussion?
I move that we approve, so that we can begin discussion, and I would like to...
Of course.
Have discussion after, there's a second.
Right, of course. Move by Alderman Fazini, is there a second?
Second to motion.
Second by Alderman Fruen, and Alderman Fazini, you wanted to first crack at this as the motion maker.
Yeah, I had three comments. The first one is, we had a referendum that did not pass in the past, as did the town of Normal, and we had a second referendum, which did pass in both places. Second, we're responsible for helping people save money if we can, and this, we have an estimate of a hundred dollars a year for every family, and I don't want to deprive a family of having the opportunity to save a hundred dollars. I also don't think it's the government's responsibility to tell people what they have to do, but this isn't telling anyone what he or she has to do. There's an opportunity to opt out, there's a second opportunity to opt out, and then there's an opportunity to opt out anytime you want, for no fee. So, it's sort of a no-brainer. Save a hundred dollars, the public wants it, and you can opt out anytime you want. That's why I'm going to vote for this.
I just wanted to clarify, irrespective, though, of our particular opinion on the electric aggregation referendum, it has passed, and we're at the execution stage. Alderman Fruen, you were, or did you, you didn't, someone else? Alderman McDade.
Hi, I have a quick question. My apologies if the answer to this is somewhere, but I think I still can't find it. I got a question today about when this is bid, that the difference between the renewable energy option, and then if there's a standard energy option, and will there be a difference in the cost of those to the residents? And is, and how does that, at what point is that decision made? I guess that's my question, and is that decision made by this council, or is that decision made at some other time? I see here that it says, the, let me turn the ten, is to acquire electric power from renewable sources, so I don't know if that's what that means, or...
I think I can clarify that. As it's presented, the recommendation is to go for a hundred percent renewable, and I believe, instead of saving, let's say, a hundred and twelve dollars a year, we might save only a hundred and four dollars, I think it was an eight-dollar-a-year cost, is that approximately correct?
Mayor, if I could, I believe we have Charles DeCastigia on the line with us. Charles, are you there?
Yes, good evening, council, this is Charles DeCastigia, good energy.
See, I was anticipating this question, so through mental telepathy, I asked Charles to immediately phone in. Charles, as many of you know, is from Good Energy, is one of the partners, he attended the two public hearings last Thursday, and I do think this question also came up. Charles, did you hear the full question from Alderman McDade?
I think I caught the tail end of it, which was, what was the incremental cost to go a hundred percent green?
Why don't you go ahead and respond to that, if you would, and then we'll make sure with the alderman, if that was what she was looking for in the way of an answer.
Okay, so, right now, customers on with Ameren the utility, in other words, customers that have never switched and never taken any offer from anyone, are currently paying Ameren residential rates. Included in there is a percentage of renewable energy as dictated by the Illinois Commerce Commission. To actually take that percent from seven to a hundred percent, the cost for doing that would be less than one-tenth of a penny per kilowatt-hour, to achieve the hundred percent renewable status for the entire community.
And Charles, could you also help explain, when those bids come in, how is it determined if we go all the way and ask for a hundred percent renewable energy as part of that bid, and how do you deal with that with all the other entities that are participating in this bid in a few days?
Okay, so, first of all, Bloomington can make its own decision there on the day up, I believe it's the mayor and the deputy city manager, so when they see the difference between the traditional price and the renewable price, they will make a decision, and Bloomington is not bound by any other community to decide whether they are doing renewable energy or not.
And if I can, I just want to point out, too, that it's either the ordinance or the resolution does authorize the purchase of renewable energy up to a hundred percent of the electric supply, so at least, if you adopt these as-is, you're authorizing the mayor and the deputy city manager to go up to a hundred percent renewable energy. Is that correct, Charles?
That is correct.
Just one second, we're going to have Todd Greenberg, corporate counsel...
Pardon me, there's two separate issues here, one of them is the bid, and the other two issues are policy decisions that the council will be making this evening. In the ordinance, there are two policy decisions that the council will need to make. One of them is you need to do tonight, which is whether to do the one-hundred percent renewable energy option. The other one is whether to impose the civic contribution. Those will be done by a full vote of the city council, and those need to be done tonight. If you, the way the ordinance is drafted currently, it will approve both of those. It will approve the addition of the civic contribution, and it will approve the one-hundred percent renewable energy option. If you do not, as a council, wish to adopt either of those two options, you need to amend the motion before the floor. What you are authorizing the city, the mayor and the deputy city manager to do on Wednesday, when the bids are open, is to choose the lowest bidder. You are not authorizing the mayor and the deputy city manager to choose the civic contribution or the renewable option. That is a policy decision that you need to make tonight, and if you have questions about that, you can ask Mr. DeCostas at this point.
And if I can, if you want to turn to the ordinance on page one, section one, the last two sentences of section one is just what corporate counsel was referring to.
Again, to clarify with Alderman McDade, as it's presented, it does include a hundred percent renewable, it does include the civic contribution, which is essentially like administrative overhead, like when Target collects sales tax, they get a little slice of the sales tax to cover their administrative overhead. So, those two things are in it, if we want to remove them, we have to remove them. You're not authorizing me and Barb on Thursday to make those decisions, you're making those decisions tonight, you're only authorizing us to take the lowest bidder. Other questions, comments?
So, I'm sorry, one more quick question. So, do we have any idea what the gap is normally between the lowest bidder and the lowest renewable energy bidder? I know we haven't opened the bids, and we don't have a magic, you know, ball or anything, but...
I thought I saw an eight-dollar figure, did I make that up?
Charles, can you help?
No, I think I can answer this. Right now, unless something drastically changed, renewable energy trades, just like electricity does in an open market, and renewable energy are at really all-time lows, so the difference between the lowest price and the lowest price with a hundred percent renewable is less than a tenth of a penny, or point zero zero one, per kilowatt-hour. On an annual basis, that's probably about eight dollars a year per resident.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Lauer, you were...
Yes, sir, I have no questions, but as you're probably aware, this does put me in a rather difficult position. Most of my constituents know me to have studied this extensively for several years now, and I've actively campaigned against it, on a point of principle, okay? I certainly commend everyone involved with trying to save the citizen money, I'm actually very, very involved in that as well. However, it is my understanding that this is kind of a unprecedented activity for the city of Bloomington, and many of the other communities that have proposed this. The only thing close to this that we've ever done is create our own water service. I believe that I have a bit of a problem with the opt-out position. I believe if we were going to do it, it should be outside the realm of the government, for number one point, okay? The second point is that we should only allow an opt-in in a co-op, and again, I really have a problem with the government being involved in the first place. I'm looking at it from the standpoint that we have a number of citizens that do not vote, some that cannot vote, and some that are not even US citizens, and we're forcing all of those folks to opt out. That requires activity that some choose not to do, I understand, but I wonder if they really have a thorough understanding of what they're not opting out on. So, those are the issues. I believe that, you know, I think we have a duty to represent all of the citizenry. And so, I was here the evening that Mayor Stockton scolded Good Energy for their lack of good, solid educational programming for the public after or before the first vote in which we voted this down. Actually, my voting precinct, I'm a precinct committeeman in eighteen Bloomington, and I spent many months, actually, trying to educate my constituents on this very item. And so, it puts me in a difficult position, I do not wish to... I do not wish to subvert the vote of the folks that did come out and vote. I realize that we did pass it, but I am going to probably have to abstain and vote only present because of my position in the past and it continues to be my position.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And just to clarify again, Alderman Lauer has mentioned this, but the most recent binding referendum is the one that passed. So regardless of our situation, whether we were in favor of this or not, we're in a situation where we're executing this, and it's a question of how we execute this. And we have a proposal to execute this in the following way. So, but I understand. Other comments? Alderwoman turns.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess I have one question for the gentleman on the line, and that is about those who are winning the bid throughout the state. My understanding, if the information I received is correct, is that the same company is winning the bid in communities all throughout the state, that, you know, somehow one particular group is always bidding the most competitively, and they're always winning the bid. Is that anywhere close to the reality?
It is and it isn't. It is in the sense that in Ameren, about 68% of the households is a metric that have gone out for this for bid, have been won by a company called Home Field Energy. They've also been won by Integris and First Energy. On a statewide basis, Home Field Energy is actually the third largest supplier behind Integris and First Energy Solutions.
Okay. So I guess there are different companies winning the bid, then. My next question, though, regarding the two options, whether to impose a civic contribution at the rate of 1/10 of 1 cent per kilowatt hours. I think you kind of used the right term earlier. I do believe that this is, if I'm not mistaken, in effect, a tax. We are taxing the citizens on electricity, and, I mean, because we are getting a portion of this civic contribution, as it were. And if I'm mistaken about that, I'd like to be informed, but that's my impression of it. And I'm not, just to finish this, the second option, whether to purchase extra energy, energy from excess amounts, I'm really confused. I will admit, I'm confused about those two options. One, I see the civic contribution, and I see that 1/10 of 1, you know, kilowatt hour, 1/10 of 1 cent of 1 per kilowatt hour could generate some income for the city, which is taxed, I think. And the other one is whether to purchase excess energy, and that seems to benefit the city financially as well. Now, help me sort through, if you would, those two options. Thank you.
If I could address sort of the first one, I can understand how some people might think it's a tax. I tend to view it as a user fee. We're providing a service, and the administrative costs of this, we're asking citizens to contribute. So, but it's sort of like, as I mentioned, the, we don't expect Target, I'm just picking on poor Target, to collect our sales taxes and give them no rebate to the cost of collecting it, and I don't know what it is. It might be a quarter of a percent out of collecting almost 8 cents. But obviously, you can view it in a variety of ways. The second question, I'd have to defer to our consultant.
Okay.
Okay, on the second question, it's not that the city would be procuring excess energy. It's that the city would be procuring energy with a higher renewable energy mix. So that would not be additional energy. Renewable energy in this form is essentially the purchase of a renewable energy certificate or credit, which then retires a renewable energy generation asset. But this is not excess energy. It is a choice of mix.
Okay. I see the word, you know, anyway, it doesn't matter. Thank you for the answer. My question then now is that, at that point, the city is still going to get some kind of a fee here, renewable energy option, .008 per kilowatt hour or $8 per year? Where does the $8 per year figure in? And is that more than the city would get in option 1, or is that less? I mean, either way, it sounds to me that the city profits, but I'm not sure which is most profitable.
Okay, so the civic contribution is where the city receives a payment. The city makes nothing on its choice of renewable or traditional power.
And again, I would like us to confine ourselves to a discussion of the implementation of this, rather than to going back to refighting the referendum, which is now already decided. Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may be a question more for David. The civic contribution, is it going to cover what our administrative costs will be or will be above that, below that? Where are we going to be in terms of that amount?
Unfortunately, I can't give you an exact answer, and that's partly because, as you've seen in the plan of operation and governance, there's a very significant energy efficiency initiative. And yes, the energy supplier will be providing a lot of services, but we do anticipate, but it's hard to measure, how much involvement staff will have to continue to be involved in this program over the length of the contract. We haven't tried to put a dollar amount on all the staff time involved to date in both elections, but it has been considerable, and we've had to shift resources to kind of address this particular priority. So it's, I can't give you that exactly, but I can also say that that energy initiative, both on a staff time, but also some other cities are looking to use some of, if there is excess money coming from the civic contribution, it could go to some of these type of energy-saving programs. But as we get more time, we can go back and try and calculate that and keep you abreast of our calculation of, you know, staff time, direct and indirect costs.
Thank you. I guess the follow-up would be, is to what extent can we adjust the civic contribution during the course of this contract? Any, none?
Charles, I think, I'm not aware that we can adjust that during the contract period, can we?
No, you have to make your decision on it tonight.
Thank you.
Alderman Fazini.
Just to confirm, I made the motion. I made it with the full knowledge that it was going to have a civic contribution and that we were going to go to 100% renewable because we want to go that way as a city. It isn't that I waited for this discussion. I understood both of those, and that was the motion. So don't have to change anything.
Any, for the debate, again, we've reached, oh, excuse me, we've reached our target, but obviously, we're not going to stop necessarily because we see this is an important issue. Alderwoman Schmidt.
I actually just have a process question, and with all respect to Alderman Lauer and you not wanting to support this, we've never voted present before, so this is a new one for me. We're either for something, we vote yes, we vote no, or we abstain for conflict of interest. So I don't want to challenge this, but I wouldn't know how to use it. So I would just like a little clarification.
We have on the county board, but I'm not going to try to apply the county board's example to this, Todd. As I understand it, you're, it's neutral, but in some cases, it could conceivably be construed as being positive?
You're correct. It, a vote of present or a vote of abstain, when it's a situation where it's not the situation where it's a legal conflict of interest vote at all. If it is, and you're voting, you may go to jail because it means you're holdings an ownership share in a contract which you cannot vote on if you're sitting on the council.
Even in Illinois, we don't want to do that.
Correct, correct. Now, there are times when, and it's happened, where a person can still stay at the table and vote abstain or present. But in that situation, under the way the courts have construed this, is that person is essentially saying, my vote is going to be paired with the majority. And the only exception to that is in cases where the statute explicitly says that some type of action has to be taken based on the affirmative vote of, you know, whatever body. And if the statute says that it has to be taken according to the affirmative vote, then anybody who votes present is not voting yes. And in that case, and in that case only, their vote is counted as a no. But otherwise, the legal effect of voting present is, or abstain, is that that vote will be added to whatever the majority result is.
Thank you, Todd. Thanks. Does that clarify? Okay. Certainly other questions, then?
I'd like to call a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, can we, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman.
Alderman McDade?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Fazini?
Are we voting on his call of the question or on the motion?
We automatically go to it unless there's an objection to his call of question. No, we're voting on the substance of the bill.
Yes.
Alderman Freuen?
Yes.
Alderman Lauer?
Abstain.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Noalamwe?
Yes.
Alderman Stern?
Present.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to the item 8B, the text amendment for chapter 8, animals and foul identification and regulation of vicious and dangerous dogs. We have a target time of 15 minutes, but I did understand that there might have been some sentiment toward postponing this for a variety of reasons to the next meeting. Okay. Alderwoman turns.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to do that?
Yes.
Now? Okay, I'd like to make a motion in view of the fact that, as our questions say, we had not partnered or contacted the Humane Society staff to not reach out to the Humane Society. Nothing, you know, no fault, I'm sure. But I think it would be a very wise decision to do that, and also to some of the other groups, the rescue groups, the shelter groups, and forgive me if I'm not naming that correctly, but all of the people in our community, and there are many who volunteer their time, you know, to, for the humanity and the good treatment of animals that very sadly have fallen into harm's way or into, you know, the way of homelessness. So my motion is to table this for two weeks until we have a chance to reach out. They have a chance to comment to us, and we just really feel like we're solid in doing the best possible thing for our stray animals.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Further discussion to table this for two weeks. City Manager Hales?
Can I just, I just want to clarify.
Absolutely.
The Wishbone K-9 Rescue Group is the one that has contacted. We will reach out to them, the Humane Society, and certainly if anyone else contacts us, I think that's kind of what I understand the direction staff will be going in making contact with those groups specifically on the proposed changes to the city ordinance dealing with vicious and dangerous dogs. So just wanted to clarify that.
Do we have any other questions, comments on this motion? Excuse me, Alderman Freuen, I won't miss you this time.
Just a very quick, maybe protection of staff. Does staff have sufficient time to do this within two weeks? Two weeks is pretty quick.
If we can kind of get a quick response, and my assistant, even today, emailed out a copy of this ordinance to the Wishbone Group. We'll do the same with the Humane. Now, however, if they need more time or if there's issues, we can report at least back in two weeks on what we've heard and if we've made progress with trying to resolve any outstanding issues.
Thank you. Any, Alderwoman Schmidt?
Yes, I just also want to make note that this discussion came before our Public Safety Committee that David Sage chairs and Judy and I sit on, and Alex McElroy had done an enormous amount of work, a very thorough report that I hope we can make available, maybe on the website to anybody who wants to read, answering actually many of the questions that I think we heard in the public comment section tonight. And hopefully, that will be a strong educational tool and make that two weeks much more doable.
We'll also try and put that on the website in the next couple of days. I think we can get that, including that full report. And if anyone has any other comments, we'll direct them to Alex.
And suffice it to say that the A3 story and the panograph by Rachel Wells has helped to, you know, educate the public. So Alderman Fazini.
I think Jim's question's a good one. Is it enough time? But I believe for our staff, it is. It's a matter of whether the outside agencies are going to be able to respond. As a past board member of the Humane Society, I don't think the Humane Society will say, I can't do it because our regular board meeting doesn't fit. This is an important issue, and they probably would hold a special meeting if they needed to. So we should be able to get this done, and those agencies, if they feel it's important enough, will be able to give us answers, David, in a quick timeframe, so.
Awesome. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion that to postpone this for two weeks. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman McDade?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Fazini?
Yes.
Alderman Freuen?
Yes.
Alderman Lauer?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Noalamwe?
Yes.
Alderman Stern?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Move right along to items 8C, Illinois Commerce Commission crossing safety improvement program funding for Fox Creek Road Bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad. And our projected time on this is about 15 minutes, but do we, David, would you want to speak to this?
Briefly, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I've asked Jim Carach, our Public Works Director, to just give you a brief overview of recent communication with the Illinois Commerce Commission, and specifically some positive outcomes in our discussions with them about replacement of the Fox Creek Road Bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. So we're going to share with you, apparently even before, it even goes back well over a decade, even longer than I had anticipated. But we are, we're reporting tonight the positive news that the ICC has been found that they would be willing and are willing to include this project in a state long-range capital improvement plan to help with some of the funding of this. So I'm going to ask Jim to talk about not only the bridge replacement project, but also the Fox Creek Road, Danbury, the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge, and if you could kind of give us some brief overview and an update, bring us current on these two projects. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Mayor and city council, tonight's staff is pleased to present some positive news on a longstanding project that staff has been advocating for, as City Manager pointed out, for over a decade. I was working for the city as a resident engineer whenever we built the project, Hamilton, Fox Creek, Veterans Parkway, Springfield Road. I see Joe's towing out in the audience. We worked, coordinated with them whenever we did that project. It was a $7.4 million job that was the biggest project the city had done up until the recent Locust Colton CSO job. So this bridge work and associated road work we're talking about has been around for a long time. Up on the screen, you're going to be seeing just kind of an overview. You have this information in your packet as well. Many of you have visited this site, but to keep in context for you, if you look up on the screen, we have Veterans Parkway right here, Hamilton Road, Fox Creek, Trinity Lutheran School, the Casey's is right here. You have Pepper Ridge Elementary. This red circle is the bridge that we're talking about, and the blue area is the associated two-lane road that we're also going to be talking to you about tonight. So whenever we talk about this overview, we say this existing bridge. We have some pictures for you here right after this. This is two-lane, it's a two-lane 19-foot-wide bridge that used to be a county bridge maintained by the city, owned by the city. Now, it's over 30 years old. The proposed bridge we're looking at is four lanes, bike trail on the north side to match what IDOT has to the east. There's Constitution Trail, actually, all the way around this. This is an important point for you to note. Constitution Trail actually follows along the north side of Hamilton-Fox Creek, stops at the bridge, stops at Fox Creek Road, then continues on to the west along Fox Creek Road. There's a lot of pedestrian access issues that we currently are experiencing, safety issues for pedestrians trying to cross. What we're trying to bring to you is, tonight is some additional funding we are finally able to achieve through the Illinois Commerce Commission. 60% long-term funding is what they're looking at for a $4 million job, as the City Manager pointed out. There's two facets of this project. There's the overall bridge project, which is about $4 million. Only that portion and that portion alone, I'll say that one more time, only that portion and that portion alone is 60% funded. We'd love it if they'd also cover the road to the west, but they won't. So we're just talking about the 60% funding for that. So the $2 million road that we talked about, that blue area on the screen right now, this is $2 million of a project of road improvement. It's a two-lane, roll-cross section road, and this is a $4 million project for the bridge reconstruction. So whenever we look at some pictures, I think these are pretty, really tell a good story. This is at the intersection of Bike and Fox Creek, looking to the west. You can see how, you know, as you're trying to, it really narrows down, there's no pedestrian accommodation for that crossing. This is actually on the bridge, looking to the west. You can see the park on the left, south side, the township, the... south side, the township facility on the north or the right side in the picture. We actually have had a lot of work Public Works has had to do in this area because this has just continued to fail, this pavement section. We also have done shoulder improvements along here just to try to maintain this as long as we can to provide a safe access. This picture, I think, is my favorite one for you to see. Whenever I built this road, that Fox Creek, Hamilton, that's out in the field, I had to cross this road. I had to cross this bridge and took my life in my own hands. And now I see other folks that try to cross that as well, and this really, you know, tells the story well. It's just narrow. It's tough to cross. You have Constitution Trail on both sides. So it's, we have a lot of people wanting to get over to Casey's, wanting to get to school. There's a lot of, three elementary schools on one side of this bridge, a park. We have a lot of pedestrian generators that people can't get to and from. So there is a great need. Transportation-wise, we have four lanes, four lanes wide on both sides of this bridge and road. So there's, this road is intended to be the major southern, east-west arterial road for the city of Bloomington. It is intended to carry 15,000 vehicles a day, and it's not currently, it's restricted, it's bottlenecked right now. It is not able to accommodate both pedestrians and vehicles at its safest and highest use. So what we're looking to do is, we're looking just tonight, only for the council to acknowledge this funding from, we see this as a win, we see this as a positive movement forward that we've been able to kind of acquire in this five-year plan for us to be able to start planning. We have in the budget already, want to make sure you know, in the current budgets that just started May 1st, there is money to do the design for both the bridge and the street. So the actual, the design plans will be done by the end of this current fiscal year, and at that point, we will just be waiting for the funding to come from the ICC. They're currently telling us fiscal year 2018. But it's important to note, when you have plans and if you have a governing body that is supportive of a project, sometimes that funding can come sooner. And so it's important for me to tell you that. There might come a point when another community can't meet the obligation that they need, and so there might come a point when we come back to council, I want to be proactive and let you know that can happen. And so we would then come back to council and provide that as an option. So that is, at this point, I'd just like to offer it up for questions and comments that you might have.
Let me just add a couple of points. First, in all the years I've, and I'm sure Jim, as we've worked with the railroads, costs never come in under budget. So even as we talk about these estimates, the railroads are notorious for taking more time than we anticipate, always asking for more. You could get the same with the state. These cost estimates are very conceptual. So until we get into the preliminary design stage and we start getting input responses from the railroad on what they want to see, how they want to see it built, et cetera, et cetera, we won't be getting much closer to a refined, you know, closer estimate that may be, you know, more realistic. So please keep that in mind. Also, I just want to point out at another time in the future, it'll probably be several more months off, we want to come back and speak to you about the Hamilton Road Bund of Commerce project, which Mayor Renner and many of you have an interest in. That's another project with a different railroad, Norfolk Southern Railroad, that we're still in negotiations. We haven't got to a point of bringing and giving you a comprehensive update. But again, these are two very significant projects, have a great impact on public safety, commerce, you know, trying to have a much more efficient transportation system, but two big projects that Jim and his staff and our engineers are working very hard on. So I think this is the first of two projects, come and give you an update on in the very near future.
Jim, you look like I want to say something.
As City Manager, you're exactly right. If you look up at the screen, Council, you'll see that Bund of Commerce, Hamilton Bund of Commerce, this is, again, the other gap in the puzzle we've talked to you about before. It's always good to keep in context that even when we solve this solution over the railroad, there still is that outstanding need for the additional project. But if you look up on the screen, you can see that all the way from the southwest part of Bloomington, all the way across to the major generator, State Farm, and on further to the east, that road will eventually connect up with Towanda Barnes Road. And so again, this is important to always keep in context, this street.
That the Hamilton Road extension, right, you'll be able to go from corporate south to Interstate 74 on a four-lane highway without ever going on veterans?
Correct.
And so that helps reduce the congestion on veterans at peak times, which isn't just helpful for our transportation system, but obviously we want people to come here to shop, frankly, as a regional retailer, and if there's congestion of veterans, they're less likely to do it.
Correct.
Anyways, obviously lots of economic benefits to the capital improvement projects. Thank you. Anything else?
Just my thanks to Jim and his staff, because as you saw in the backup report, they've had many meetings over the last decade with these state officials, constantly looking at how we can leverage and seek out state dollars to help reduce the city's costs on some very important projects. So they've just done a great job to date on this and other projects as well.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you, City Manager. Other questions? Alderman Sage, this is your district.
Yeah, I'm just prepared to make a motion when appropriate.
Oh, okay. Alderman Lauer?
I'm prepared to second that.
Okay. I love efficiency. Alderman Sage?
Mayor, I'll move that the bridge funding offer from the Illinois Commerce Commission be acknowledged and that staff be authorized to proceed with project planning activities and negotiations with the Union Pacific Railroad.
Awesome. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Alderman Lauer. Thank you very much. Further discussion, questions? Seeing on, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman McDay.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Noalamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Hi.
Great. Thank you very much. We move right along to the City Managers' reports and discussion. City Manager David Hales, do you have anything for us this evening?
Very briefly, Mayor, I did want to just report that this afternoon I sent you an email on some very positive news regarding hockey in the city of Bloomington.
That's right.
At the Coliseum Arena. SIAM and its president, John Butler, and Bart Rogers, general manager, for many months have been working behind the scene, trying to help ensure that we do have professional hockey here in Bloomington in the future. They are now at the point, as indicated today, to share a little bit more information. I will ask them when they're able to come and brief the council, but again, essentially it looks like there will be a change in the ownership of a professional hockey team to be in the Coliseum next winter, and it looks like that we'll have some competition with both Bloomington and Peoria, the two hockey teams being in the same league. I think it's the Southern Pacific Coast League. So I did send you some more information, but my, again, I'd just like to recognize all the effort of SIAM, because as you know, since the Coliseum has been open, it has been very challenging financially for these team owners to be able to field the hockey team and really make money and to have it profitable. But I think they've really come up with a model that has the best chance of some greater longevity, some financial sustainability for the hockey team. And my hat's off to them, and we'll have them back when they can share more information and more details on that announcement that came out today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Actually, I have a few things to say. I wanted to make sure that as much as possible, since I was trying to have efficient, quick meetings, that I would be as brief as I possibly can be. This should take me about four minutes, and then we'll move on to the council comments. But as we had discussed in our council retreat in many points, we're really trying to make progress in a variety of areas. One, of course, is openness and transparency to make sure that at one sense, we bring people back into City Hall and then bring City Hall to them. And we had our first mayoral open house. We had only about 25 people, which was also good. We basically sat around that table and talked for about an hour and a half about a broad range of issues and concerns. So we definitely want to make sure that that's a continued tradition, and I'll do that from, may do it from 4:00 to 5:30. Turns out that we, I guess, locked the doors at 5:30, and there were some people who couldn't get in. So we may alter the hours a little bit so they don't expect that to be the case. But we do want to listen to people, and especially in that environment. We had, I think, really good quality conversations. Thank you, City Manager Hales, for joining us, and I believe Alderman Fazini, Alderwoman Sterns, who else? Was anybody else there? Okay. Thank you all for attending. It was very helpful to show support, and we were all listening to people's concerns. And frankly, in the short run, it wasn't anything that, you know, concerns that we hadn't heard before, streets, infrastructure, et cetera. But we will also have neighborhood-based town hall meetings, and unfortunately, the first one that I had scheduled too rapidly, thinking, when I worked with Alderman Black and the Northwest Neighborhood Association, it was the Tuesday night that happened to be May 28th. I thought, yes, we've got a plan. Turns out, the council meets on Tuesday that day because of Memorial Day, and we're not able to come up with an alternative. So we're going to go ahead and have to reschedule the Northwest Neighborhood Association and this first town hall meeting. The idea would be, if we can get the systems up and running, we'd have nine a year. So every ward, we'd have a neighborhood-based meeting every year. Mostly, we'd take off the summer months, and we've got some additional interest this summer, so we might not take off all the summer months this summer. And basically, whatever city officials would be available, perhaps poor Jim Carach, because there are often issues associated with that, and the City Manager David Hales or Barb or whoever can join me, and the Alderman or woman from that area. And we go to a community center or perhaps even a private home if necessary, and talk to people in the environment which they're most comfortable. And so that's the idea behind beginning to listen a little more clearly and systematically, and we're making progress on that. We're also making progress on how we're going to declassify minutes. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I had at least a tentative agreement from Alderwoman Sterns, and I will be part of the subcommittee. Maybe there'll be a third person joining us to begin that process so we can, as much as possible, let the minutes, your documents, get back into your hands so you see what's going on in your City Hall. Now, beyond that, in terms of streets and infrastructure, we have had lots of conversations amongst Alderman, our retreat last week, City Manager David Hales and I, and some others on the Public Finance Committee, about investing perhaps in a bond to help put a down payment at least on fixing our streets. And that might be in conjunction with the Hamilton Road extension. It might not, we're, this will be maybe three to six months before we finally make that determination. The idea, of course, is to fix our streets without raising taxes. The follow-through with that is, we also are going to try to have, a little sooner than that, a pension plan system that can be a model for others where we commit to funding our pensions effectively. And anyway, well, don't clap till you see the details. We're trying. I didn't say we had it. I said, we're working on it, you know? I want to under-promise and over-deliver if possible, so let's just keep that in mind. In addition to that, of course, we, it'll be no secret to anybody that I think it's really critical that we work to help revitalize downtown Bloomington with private investment. It is our cultural core, it's our historic core, and in order to do that, whether it's the thing I've sometimes talked about, obviously, a hotel, or whether it, whatever it is downtown, we need to have a plan before the private sector's going to invest money. We actually have a plan, Downtown Revitalization Plan. It's been sitting, collecting dust for several years, and what I've asked City Manager David Hales and Barb to do is to reexamine that. Let's take out the parts that are controversial and move ahead with what's left. Now, again, to clarify a plan, a plan is not something that you implement everything in. In fact, there's never been one that has been, everything's been implemented. Very often, the goals and ideas may even be contradictory. This comes out of the several-month process of speaking with investors, speaking with residents, et cetera. So the most successful urban plan in our hemisphere is the Vernon Plan for Chicago, and in a hundred years, they got 20% of it. So it's basically saying, this is what we've talked about, these are some of our priorities, these are some good ideas, all of which we can't possibly implement, but these are some of them. And that's what I've asked the council, or excuse me, the staff to work on, and will be at some point, maybe in a month or so, I don't know how long that'll take, bring this to the council for approval, minus the most controversial things. Downtown has become very controversial in our community. That's unfortunate. It shouldn't be. I'd like us, as we go forward to it, be unifying and realizing that we all can benefit, that all boats will float when we have a revitalized, strong downtown. Now, beyond that, we've, as I probably have heard in one sense or another, City Manager David Hales and I have, we're on a conference call with Lisa Bennett, the head of Illinois EPA, and she's going to meet with us, I guess, sometime in June again. Either she's coming to Bloomington or we're going to Springfield to talk about some of our water quality and other issues. So we're trying to make progress on that front. Obviously, in public safety, we want to make sure that we keep the morale high of our police officers and firefighters, trying to stay as close contact with them as possible, and also to stay grounded in what we need. We've got the lowest crime rate in Illinois as a metropolitan area. We want to keep it that way. Want to make sure that they have what's necessary to do their jobs. And we, as we're exploring other options, we want to make sure that we're collaborative with our neighbor to the north, Normal, and possibly on a fire station to the northeast. But again, that's an earlier phase. That's some of what we're working on. And also, I've been talking with City Manager David Hales, in light of the abandonment of the managed competition policy, that we move forward with something that recognizes we want to be as innovative and creative as possible and to have our services delivered in the most effective and efficient way that we possibly can. So we're going to be working on performance measurements in a different light in the future. Anyway, those are the things and priorities, some of the updates that I have, and please let me know if there are some other things that we should be doing. And I'll leave it open now to council comments. And what is the particular order? I guess I should know this, that we start?
We just follow here.
At this point, it's just open. Does anyone, any Alderman, Alderwoman have comments for this evening?
Guess me.
Alderman Fazini and then Alderman Sage.
Part of what we do in this job is vote on things like we did tonight. We do research before we vote. We listen to each other. And we also are responsible for really understanding the role of a city official. And in that respect, there are frequently times where we can go outside the community and learn from other communities or learn from experts. And this last Saturday, we had that opportunity, and City Clerk Tracy Covert and Alderman Jim Fruin and I went to East Peoria to the Ninth Annual Municipal Law Seminar, put on by Miller Hall &amp; Triggs, a very fine attorney firm in Peoria. The featured speaker, we'll give you a little idea of the quality of this seminar, was State Treasurer Dan Rutherford. And he spent a good amount of time explaining the financial woes of the state of Illinois. But underlying that, his message was, Illinois is a pretty darn good state, and as soon as we solve our pension situation, we're going to see an uptick in our bond rating, and we're going to see lots of good things happening. And he wants to be part of that. And it was a real good message, because all we hear about the state of Illinois is how bad it is. We have too much good to keep talking that way, and I think Dan is trying to make that happen. We learned a lot about the Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act, and for me, it was important on the financing, all the different alternatives we as a city have to finance different things. That bond issue that Mayor Renner talked about, to do 10 or 15 million dollars at these very, very low rates. There are places doing that right now. We'll be among the first if we do it, but we won't be the first, and we learned that by going to a seminar like this. So that wasn't just a pie in the sky thing. That's actually happening by more progressive cities. So it was a very good seminar. It was good to be involved personally, and I gave Mayor Renner a 276-page book summarizing all the different kinds of municipal law issues that you might run into. And since this is the third such seminar that I went to with Miller Hall &amp; Triggs, they started out with a 120-page book nine years ago, so it just keeps getting bigger. It's a very good book and has a lot of good information, so I just want to share that with everyone.
Thank you very much. Alderman Sage?
David, I'm wondering, you had emailed us with some information about a policy position statement, if you will, on a couple of proposed state bills. And I'm wondering if you would, could just briefly kind of summarize those? I think we're taking a position that we'd be opposed to both of those bills. And just maybe if you could, again, just kind of briefly summarize those so that we have full awareness here, you know, not only across the council, which we already have, but for folks who are here in attendance as well.
Well, let me first indicate that the Illinois Municipal League, which the city of Bloomington is a member of, has a very strong lobbyist or adequacy group down in Springfield. They watch a lot of the legislation, and of course, early in the session, it was slowly coming out, but now recently, you know, as we're into the last few weeks of the session, there is constantly things popping up. And just recently, we did get information that I think one of the bills, and I can't remember the number, wanted to preempt local authority and basically strip from local authority the ability to close a fire station. Now, you may ask, well, why would the state legislature want to restrict local authority on something like that? I do believe this issue comes out of, up around the Chicago- I do believe this issue comes out of, up around the Chicago area. There's kind of a dispute going on right now about consolidation of some fire departments, and I, as I understand it, some of the fire unions are involved in that discussion. But irregardless, the IML sent out this quick notice, they oppose it, it goes contrary to their guiding principles and values, and so, we shared that with you. The second had to do with another bill that would further erode a revenue stream coming to the city, and that had to do with the so-called, Alex, I think if I can recall the replacement tax.
The personal property tax replacement fund, I think.
You might recall that it was one or two years ago where the state legislature, to help fund the so-called regional school superintendent office, where the funding was stripped, they dipped into one of the local government funding streams, replacement tax. Well, now, this most recent amendment would even further take money out of that particular funding stream to, again, to address some of these regional issues. Once again, Illinois Municipal League opposed that, so we went along with that, and we shared with you. We're not only, we sent this information to our local legislators, but we had also asked any of our, you know, elected officials, please don't hesitate, call, send an email to any of those legislators. Sometimes it is much more effective for the mayor or the city council to also send your notes. But again, IML feels that these are two, just in the last few days, that warrants all local government-elected officials to please contact the legislators and let them know that we cannot afford to have them solving some of their financial woes by taking away some of these funding streams, or preempting, you know, local authority. So, those were, I think, the two we just sent to you. Any questions on that?
And briefly, I guess my final comment is, is that, again, we spend a lot of time talking about the need for prioritization here at the local level, and whether it's something like public safety, whether it's, you know, public safety needs in northeast Bloomington, or an infrastructure need, you know, in southwest Bloomington, or any of the other things that we've talked about recently. We continue to, I think, devote the time and the energy to try and have really credible conversations about prioritization here. I guess I continue to be a little frustrated with the lack of what I see, a commitment to prioritization in Springfield. I'd like to see more of a willingness to, you know, fix some of the problems like Rob suggested, the pension, or some of these other things, rather than to continually come back and put the burden on the local municipalities to try and balance the state checkbook. That's an ongoing concern, and I hope that, you know, we'll take the time to make those contacts appropriately, so thank you, David.
Great. And thank you, Alderman Sage. Alderwoman Sterns.
I just wanted to recognize the award that apparently we got for increased recycling in the city. It's a topic that, you know, has been a favorite with me for a very long time, and really, it's a financial win-win. We have vastly increased the recycling recently with the carts and with the ease of doing it. And, I mean, it's just such a, I hate, I don't like the term no-brainer, but no-brainer, because we get paid to sell recycle, and we spend money to send garbage to the landfill. So, very good work on that. And also, I received some very positive comments about our Public Works guys out there. I don't think any of them are left anymore here tonight, doing some resurfacing out on East Chestnut, and just that the esprit de corps is improved, that they're feeling good, the citizens are happy. A gentleman who is a kind of a, doesn't have a lot of positive things to say, called me with a lot of positive things to say about the Public Works guys out there repairing the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sterns.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to, the award that Alderwoman Sterns referred to was the city of Bloomington was recognized by the Illinois Recycling Association to receive the only municipality award for having made great strides in the area of recycling. We sent out a press release, they'll be receiving this award in a few days, we'll get some pictures. But again, the credit goes to Jim Karch, his staff, and the many partners we've had, been to West Fiber and others. I think, as you've seen, we're getting just a hair under seventy percent participation of our households in Bloomington recycling, so I think we're about sixty-eight. So, just been phenomenal with the single-stream recycling, the automated carts, you know, our households are really participating, and they've just been really innovative and creative in trying to reach out, as well as the town of Normal and our counterparts there as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Now, we have these, David, the executive session site section.
Typically, we'll only put that on, but we have no need to call that tonight.
Okay, I've circled that, though. What's the story? Okay. Well, then, at this point, we just need a motion to adjourn, we have a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I just want one more quick comment. I wanted to thank you for your attention to the Boy Scouts about a week ago, late into the evening, and city staff as well. I think they did have a very good campery, and they wish to thank you as well.
Oh, thank you.
On behalf of the Boy Scouts, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks. Awesome. All right. Now can I have a motion to adjourn?
Not quite.
No. Oh, gosh, come on, it's a terminal meeting.
Normally, you hear, normally, you hear the term piling on, it's a negative. We're going to pile on for Jim Karch. I have reported three pothole areas in the city, and within seventy-two hours, all three have been filled. I've had two other people come to me and say, you gave me that number, I wasn't really sure it was going to work. I called in, and guess what? The potholes are filled. So, I think it's great, Jim, and the more people who can report those, they don't have to be in your own neighborhood. If you see a pothole, call the number, it'll get fixed. I made the motion, we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, move. Second. Okay, all in favor, signature of office hanging eye. If you're opposed, you can stay.
You're right. Good job, I am first, Steve.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that. What am I supposed to do?